Okay, so calling the meeting to order at 7:14 PM. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So.
All right, and someone second? Okay, and all in favor? Hi, all right, moving along. Please let me know if you have any edits or corrections to the September meeting minutes. Okay, and that's the case, can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you for that, one second. All right, thanks, no way, and all in favor?
Hi.
Lovely. All right, moving on to the meat of the meeting. Okay, so first up on the agenda is just your review of the planning calendar. So I'm just going to mention that we have a very busy time coming up. So October, we'll get into details of all this, but we've got the big thing coming up is the Halloween party. That is a lot of work and a lot of work coming up on that, Kim will talk about that, Rebecca. We have, in October, we have insurance policies review, is that anything, Kim, that we need to worry about?
It's all set, it's all just set to renew.
Okay, great. The survey, the community discussion of the survey results is happening on the 28th, 7 o'clock virtually, folks can join us there. We also have budget planning sessions that have happened and are happening, all leading into November where we have, we need to work on the budget draft, present that, November is also when we work on the director's annual performance evaluation. We'll probably be doing some website updates in November if we have the logo approved. And of course, we have Veterans Day, which still has some discussion about what's happening there. There is a holiday tree lighting and a light parade that's happening in Steventown on the 27th. I don't know if we have any desire to participate in any way in that.
Yeah, I think we should.
So we can talk about that. And all of that is so that we can get our budget approved in our December meeting and be on track for 2022. Anything else to add on the calendar or questions or things?
Holiday market?
We have not put it on, we have not.
It's something we have to talk about.
Yeah.
Because we don't know whether or not, I think that the fire department is thinking about doing, or they're doing something similar at the fire hall. So we've got to talk about whether or not we can, and whether or not we can do it in terms of the space and distancing and all that other stuff with COVID.
My largest concern with it at this point would be the space issue because
There's not much.
Been pretty tight the past years here, and is that something we feel comfortable with at this point?
Right.
And, you know, would we have kids coming in with Santa, would we have, you know, all of the things that we would normally have with that, is that really?
Yeah, exactly. Just so you know, the veterans meeting, they're not doing their annual meeting as far as I know. And the luncheon, they are not doing, either they're going to hand out snacks at the, at the park, and I spoke with Diana Clark, and she said that, you know, if anyone wanted to help even just hand out, you know, the snacks and hot chocolate, that would be much appreciated. On Veterans Day, no, sorry, Saturday, the 6th.
Speaking about Diana, she is going to come to our next meeting. And so.
Diana Clark?
Diana Clark, yes.
Oh, she is, okay. Yeah, I met with her yesterday, she's wonderful, she was great.
No, she seemed pretty enthusiastic, and she's spoken to you and everything was fine, and so.
Yep.
So just to close out, so since this is count the calendar talk, I guess, because places need to talk about it. So with the, with the holiday market, we, I think what we had talked about in the, I think in the last meeting, I'm confused though between what meetings we've talked about what. But at this point, our fundraising goals, we're sort of okay for this year with the assumption the annual field goes as, as we hope. But then at this point, we didn't necessarily need any other fundraising events to meet our goals, and so that, I don't think we need to have that as a consideration for it, it would be more as a community spirit, bring people to the library thing. And I think that's where we have a to debate, is that, you know, safety issue of that right now?
I would just say on that, in terms of short-term fundraising goals, no. But ultimately, we're probably going to undertake a plan, which is going to contemplate construction, which we need to meet, so I mean, I think there is a need to continue.
Oh, I don't doubt that.
I'm just saying, putting, putting aside the health reasons, I think, you know, if we can do it, we should continue fundraising activities and not rest on the, we'll probably hit our goals.
But at this point, do we feel like that's the right fundraising event, given the logistics of it?
Yeah, that's the.
Right.
So in December, we usually do like a baked gingerbread making day for the kids, which is also ridiculously crowded. We also do the holiday market, which is also really crowded, so I don't know at this point whether or not it would be the right thing to do, just because it does get so crowded. The other thing too is that I know the veteran, or the fire department is looking to do something very similar on that weekend of the tree lighting and everything, so, you know, if we were to do one and then, or they do theirs on that Saturday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And then we do one a few weeks later, are we going to get as much traffic, I don't know.
There's also the art show happening through November, which I have not heard details in terms of if that's going to be sale focused or not.
It's both, we'll have the ability to sell the work that we want to sell. We're going to have a reception for it the day of the first show, so that would be the 6th. And it's going to be for an hour before the show starts. If I remember correctly.
And only ones that, like, cleared out at least a half hour before the show starts, because a lot of people, who are these, well, that's happening, obviously.
Okay, then we're going to have to talk to Louise, because I think we figured we do an hour before the show, that way people would be wanting to hang out and then, you know, just go straight to the show instead of leave for a half an hour. So I don't know if we have to figure out a way to work that. Sure, okay, we can talk about the logistics of it, but yeah, definitely, we're doing the the receptions that, of the November 6th for the art show, and that's not going to be, like, the artists aren't going to be there for the entire, like, all three, or excuse me, all four of the shows, it's just going to be, our information will be up, and then if we want to sell anything, we'll try to, we'll have like phone numbers and cards and things like that that we can put out. So whether or not it's sale focused, I don't, you know, if you want to. So so yeah, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm hesitant to do anything big here, just in general because of COVID. And with the kid stuff, I mean, I would think it would be great to have Santa come and, you know, do the typical thing, but again, I'm just, I don't know that it's the right thing to do at this point. I mean, kids will start getting vaccinated, but I don't think that that'll be up and running until, for a while, is my guess. So.
Well, you would think that Santa would be safe from COVID up there on the North Pole.
You would think that, but then he's coming and being in contact with all these kids and, you know, then bring it back to the elves.
Well, that's true, that would be sad for next year.
Yes, it would. So I don't know, you know, in terms of a fundraiser, should we just do something like a bake sale where people come in and, you know, do the thing online that we've done in the past, that definitely worked well.
Use a remote kind of, or a hybrid remote.
I think that that doesn't sound like an idea, like, you know. And it's easy enough to get the website up and running to do all of that stuff, so I would think so.
If, if, are you talking about a bake sale where people come pick it up?
I'm ordering online, kind of like we've done in the past. Or maybe a hybrid, and so doing both.
So if we did something like that, and the weather was okay, and we had a willing participant, could we do something where we had, like, Santa on the deck and, like, a mail your letter to Santa box below where you could come wave to Santa and put your letter in the box?
Good idea.
That's creative.
Well, the willing.
So nothing to be inside, bake sale be outside.
You might be able to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, the traffic wasn't so heavy as I recall, with different events and stuff like that, you're, with kids, playing. So if you just do some sort of hybrid marketing where people can, like always saying, you're also pre-buy, you may be able to pull that off without.
I think that that would be.
I think that probably works.
Okay. We don't have a date yet. I don't know if we want to pick a date now, and Rebecca, I'm assuming we're not going to do the gingerbread house stuff this year.
No, I'm not going to, if, I mean, if I was really motivated, I could probably put something together as a take-home, but.
Oh, God, no.
Right now, I don't.
No, I think that that's way too much, like, we would get, you're going to have to divide candy, and I don't know how we would set out, that would be.
What about some take-home, other activity like Christmas ornaments to pay?
We can definitely do that kind of a thing, you know, take-home, I was actually going to start doing some more of those again. So, but yeah, no, I don't think gingerbread houses are. I think everyone will understand that we need to wait till next year. So we could potentially, so doing like, I can see if we can get the Santa who came in the past if, to do the waving on the deck, I think that's a great idea, and then we can have the inside be, pick up your bake sale items. I can also reach out to other people, like we did last year, where we had vendors and they sent me their, their stuff, and then they had their things, people bought, or online, and then it was ready to pick up that, you know, on that one specific day, so that didn't seem to go too poorly, I think it went actually pretty well.
We haven't done a toy drive in the past, have we?
No, because the toys, we usually get toys to give out to kids from Rensselaer County through their toy drive, so we've never really done one of our own, because we get them, we get like three very large bags, sometimes four, and don't even give all those away.
Dollar General is doing it, the fire department.
Okay, so.
That's.
They have almost no abundance of toys, except that it could be possible, yeah, last year.
Yeah, well, that's what happens, so we don't have, like, we give ours to the food pantry, but then they don't use.
We can't do that anymore, because they're not, people are not coming inside again this year either, so it'll have to be. How we did it last year.
Yeah, we'll do it that way.
Can I ask a quick question about Diana coming to the meeting? Is that with a specific interest in being a potential veteran liaison, or just sort of doing what?
I'm not sure, I didn't.
Yeah, it was more just to get her acquainted with board and to just discuss how we might be able to work together. There was no special agenda. It was more, because we've had trouble breaking the ice over the years, and so this, I think it's the first time anybody has come from the veterans in my tenure. And so it just seemed like a good idea to talk with her, get to know her.
What is this vision?
Next, next board meeting.
Yeah, next board meeting, 7 o'clock.
I actually was thinking that, I do have an agenda. If she doesn't win town council, or if she doesn't get on, we could ask her to be a board member here, and that she could be the liaison for, between the two groups.
Yeah, that, that that was in the back of my mind, but I didn't want to be negative.
Well, yeah, so I guess I probably shouldn't have said anything either. Do we want to pick up a date for the bake sale thing so that I can start advertising it and figuring it out? We could even, I would do it on a Saturday, actually, when the library's open, that way we might get more traffic.
It must have been 13th instead of the 16th, so that, with 5 million things going on at the same time. Oh, December.
Yeah. I would maybe do the 11th, so it's at least got a couple, at least two weeks in between. Oh, and I'm not going to be here on the 27th. So, does 11th sound okay, or does that?
I think so, I think that's probably. Yeah.
Don't have to be here.
Yep, I'll reach out to everybody that we did last time. Yeah. So.
Isn't that sort of what we did last year?
I think, yeah, we did, it was, it was, we had a lot of stuff for sale, and it, it generated some soaps and pottery and bags, I think your mom was doing some stuff, yeah, there was quite a bit, so. That'd be fun, we always do an ornament making program, but it's not, obviously. Buy back your kids' ornaments.
Be recorded.
Okay, so Daniel, or simple love for that one.
So for the holiday lighted parade, I know we don't have like a library vehicle, or something that resonates that way. Well, you can march, so you can march. I'm not going to be here for it. That's kind of fun. We get the, I have to, if you're, we're getting down the road. It can be a marching group, so.
That would, we have plenty of cards, so we can just put books on them and throw books out.
No throwing is allowed, that is, that has been stipulated.
I am definitely not going to be here for that day, so I can definitely help organize it, but I won't be able to actually be here. My sister-in-law's getting married over Thanksgiving, so they're going to be in Santa Fe. Yes, she can believe it. I've never been, and I'm looking forward to it. I, I'm very, it's going to be fun, I hope.
Send out, just to let people say, would you be willing to participate in this, if we get several people, we can, and if not, well.
Unlikely candidate, you guys, like that, my daughter.
Alrighty, anything else on upcoming calendar thing, planning things? All right, director's report.
So again, because of COVID, I haven't been doing a whole lot of this, running through different programs. I am going to start doing some more of the take and make bags again, now that school's up and running, and see if I can get some of that stuff going, but we have the Halloween party, which is on the 30th. We have a new book group, or another book group session scheduled for November 16th. We're still doing mahjong, and actually, I've asked, I've got some of the ladies have asked if maybe we can try it for a Saturday, so I think we're going to start doing mahjong on Saturdays as well. In addition to the Thursdays, yep. So I just have to come up with the, the date to start that, which will be sometime in October, I just haven't come up with the date. And we do have a blood drive set up for the 30th, so if people want to save the date for that one.
That big change?
Yeah, we changed it. Yep, it's on the, it's on the 30th now. We felt it was better to do it after, like, or in between the two holidays instead of right before Christmas.
Yeah.
So, to that. Dungeons and Dragons is still going strong, we have four to five teens per week coming to that. Mahjong is also still going strong, four to seven people usually for that. Live at the library, our last two sessions went pretty well, the September 17th one was not as well attended, it only had about 10 people or so, three dogs, but, you know. Exactly. The last one was great, they, they had pretty good people for that. Yes. Something like that. All okay?
Yeah, it was just a pop-up message.
The, so the very last Live at the Library event, we had 25 people give or take and two dogs. It was incredibly successful, and I do have people already asking, can we sign up for next year, so I'm sure we'll have a full schedule for next year as well. For next summer. Book group, there were four people, which was great, I was trying to, wanted to get there, but wasn't able to. And my National Voter Registration Day with the League of Women Voters, I had one person come, and then she went home and grabbed her husband, and he came back, and they made a lovely donation to the League of Women Voters, but that was about it. It was a good, you know, it was great for them, and they were very grateful for all the information that they gave out, so, and the woman who ran it is, was extremely excited about being here, so we're going to try and work together again next year and make it more of an event. Hopefully COVID will be a little bit less of an issue, and we can do some more stuff. Community Room, John Wall is now using the whole building for his yoga classes, and those have been going well on Tuesday mornings. Circulation is pretty much the same, it went up in some sections, down in others, but it definitely is, it's holding steady. If you can see on the circulation for the 2021 with the the bar graft here, it's, it's pretty, it's been pretty steady, so that's, that's a good thing, it has been pretty quiet, though. The past couple of weeks have been very quiet. There was a day when we only had three people come in, and so I don't know if it's just because it's been gorgeous weather, or if it's because COVID's coming back around or what, but we're definitely seeing a drop in, in numbers. But you can see those on the total visits. We added a couple of new patrons for September to our patron, to our registered patrons. I think we added four, which is not bad for one month in Steventown. And I am working on getting a letter out to all 899 people who have expired cards. I do have to go through the list, though, because there are some people I know who have moved out of state, I know some people have passed away, so it's taking longer than just like sending this quick thing out, so, because I need to make sure I don't go to people who shouldn't go to. So that is in process. Hopefully, that'll be done by the end of next month. We added quite a few things to the collection this, this month, 16 new adult fiction, 13 nonfiction, which would also correspond with our adult book circulation was up a little bit, and so was our DVD collection, or circulation was also up, so so, where it was. This month's DA meeting, I, I wanted to just let you all know a couple of things, because I had mentioned stuff that happened, was happening, that I had mentioned last month that we were thinking about doing. We were working on something called the reciprocal lending agreement with the Mid Hudson system, and that has since not happened, and it's not going to happen. The reciprocal lending agreement was with Overdrive and all of our e-content material. It was basically, it would allow our patrons to have access to Mid Hudson's system, and then vice versa. The, we couldn't come up with an agreement that all systems decided to say okay to, so it's, but Tim Burke is actually working on getting some other systems to try and do it as well. It wouldn't take away anything from our patrons, like, our patrons would have first grabs towards all new materials and all, anything that's in our system. But we would still have access then to the other systems, and it could definitely be a great advantage, so. Our ancestry.com library edition, we were thinking that was going to end, but we are having that, is going to continue until 2022. We don't have anybody in Steventown who actually uses it, but we'll try and promote it a little bit more and see if we can get anybody to join to, to use it. It's a very specific group of people who use it, it's not, it's not used like by hundreds and hundreds of people. Oh, but, but not the library edition, yeah. It's actually a little bit less than what if you were to just pay for subscription. Yeah, so keep your subscription. No. Yes. Good idea. We were also looking into offering canopy to the system, but the Central Library has decided not to go with that for this year, just because it was pretty expensive. But canopy is another, it was like hoopla, where you pay per view of the different materials, and it was decided that it was just not going to work for this year, so.
You love it and has it, right?
Yes, so.
Broader selection, that's what I think.
Yeah, they do, and it's more new, and I think they also do more stuff like from BBC and PBS and that kind of thing, so. And they're asking, they've asked for this every year, a 5% increase in our minimum spending for e-content to go to, into our budget, which is something that every library has agreed to and said, yes, we'll do this. Whether or not it actually it's definitely needed, so it's something we need to consider for when we do our budget. All right, so I was going to put up the new Halloween story walk, and when I went back there yesterday, it's a pile of mud, standing water, so I did not put up the new story walk. If it ever dries out, there will be a new Halloween story walk out there. I would really, really like to figure out if there's a way we could build like even a very simple walkway with wood or something like that, I mean, I know I could definitely build some platforms, but if anyone has any ideas or wants to make that something they'd love to do, that would be so great, because it is so wet back there, it's just, it's a puddle.
It's really, I mean, that's, we're not going to be able to fix it for Halloween, but it would really be nice to have that.
Something, I don't even know, but it's, I mean, it's a big, it is, it's, I thought when I put, when I put the story walk in, I did it so that it was away from the really wet areas. With this year, it's just, I can't, I didn't do anything, so. Anyone has any ideas, I'd be grateful to hear them. Nice egg claim, we have been reimbursed in full, so I just, I'm depositing the check tomorrow morning. So that is one expense, though, thank goodness, we don't have to worry about. And it was extremely easy, I got an email, he said, send me your bill, sent him the bill, a couple days later, I got a check. So there was no arguing or anything like that with him. So I'll reach out about that, okay, so the big thing that I've been doing this month has been meeting with contractors, landscapers, plumbers, tree guys, to just look into all these different projects that we have for the building. The main thing has been that cabinet over there that covers up the electrical panel. I met and have gotten, I've got two bids from Kirk Mitchell and Glenn Phillips to do something with that system over there. Guy Gramley has decided not to put in a bid because his insurance. Guy Gramley has decided not to put in a bid because his insurance said that since it's an electrical panel and it's in a commercial building, he didn't feel comfortable doing that. So he's he's taken his name out of the running for it. Yes. Kirk has talked about trying to find a way to just kind of extend the paneling so that we have or extend the door so that there's more of a space to open it up. And Glenn Phillips actually just recommended taking and drywalling it and putting a door in there. So that's something that I think with building committee stuff, we're probably have to figure out what proposals for. Plumber. Plumbing looks good. We have to figure out the trees in the front yard are also not good. They are dead and dying or dead and or dying. So it's been recommended that those come down. So again, I'm this should all be building committee stuff or or what, but and then I met with two people for landscaping. And I've got one bid from from one person. From Andrew's maintenance for that. Okay, so other things that I've done, e-content, committee meeting, community survey, what through Zoom. Yesterday, I met with Diana Clark from the Steventown Veterans Group. And she, like we were just talking, she's extremely excited to start trying to get our organizations working together. We're going to start thinking about what we can do in terms of programming and presentations. She's already doing a women in the military presentation at the Veterans Day event. But she's only going to be talking for 15 minutes. So I asked if she wanted to do something like an actual 45 minute, and she said she would love to do that. So we're going to bring her in. But that's another thing I need to talk about is can we are we doing programs yet? Are we not? But that's COVID stuff. So we'll can talk about that later. She's also going to help give me information that we can put on the website for veterans page. They were very excited. She was happy to hear about that as well. And then I'm also going to continue to share stuff on our newsletters and Facebook pages and things like that. So that will definitely be a good. I think it's going to be a good partnership that we can work together and try and get stuff out there. She had no idea we even had that little kiosk that we have over there. And when she saw it, she was like, this is fantastic. And how could we, how would I not know about this? So we're going to try and make that a little bit more visible as well. Okay, I already talked about the mailing and I already talked about the pandemic stuff. So I guess I don't know if we want to go into the pandemic things.
Yeah, does anyone have any questions for hand the going?
Oh, sorry. There's one other thing. Another project that I'm going to look into doing, and I'm going to try and see if I can get in touch with the Historical Society is something called a Story Bridge, which is where we try and get stories from people. And I did see that rant. I have to look into it. Where we get stories from people who live in town, and it could be anything about their lives. It could be about what it was like to grow up in Steventown, what it was like to move to Steventown, what do they do? You know, there's lots of different really cool things that you can do with it. So if anyone wants to help with it, let me know and, you know, I'd be happy to. Yep, you record it and then you can, we would put it up on our website as a like an archive, basically. The they have a pretty interesting website. So you can kind of get an idea what it is. It's called ourstorybridge.org. So it's very involved, but I think we can make ours a smaller. It doesn't need to be as involved as what they do, but we can make it something good. So like I said, I'm going to reach out to the Historical Society as well.
I participated in something similar in Puerto Rico, it was called Memorial, as a memory. It was it was pretty cool. Very interesting for the younger folks as well.
Awesome.
To hear stories about people that there for coming here.
That's kind of what I was thinking is that there's so many stories from all the, you know, some of the older folks who live here have been here for generations, you know, it would be great to hear what they have to say about what was it like, you know, so. That's awesome. Is there a place where we can see what you did?
And, you know, he had done a talk about his great grandfather, who was a Buffalo soldier, who was actually with Lincoln and we. And it was a really great presentation, and he said he would be interested in doing it again. I was thinking there, but then I thought it would probably be better to do it in a different venue, which would probably open up the different people to him. And so I don't know if you'd want to follow up with them.
I would love to do that. So she spoke about grandfather.
And now there's a sculpture of them in the cans that was just put up recently. So he has some new materials to talk about.
Okay, I'll definitely get in touch with him. That would that would be great. The other thing with Diana that we were going to work on for different programs to, you know, would be the history of the veterans here in Steventown. What's their history like? You know, how do they start? She said she could probably come up with a talk to do for that one. And it was Yeah, I'm I'm blanking right now. Oh, no, it was just the history of the vets and then the women in the military. So, yeah. But then that brings up how do we want to do programs and if you do programs and all that stuff?
I mean, I think the kids program is kind of a separate issue right now to me, just because especially with the schools continuing to discourage
Yeah.
outside gatherings, things like that. But in terms of adult programming, I wonder if we can think about it more in terms of the density of what the program would accommodate.
I mean, I'm thinking if the town hall is having programs again, then the Historical Society is holding programs again and just making sure it's our distance. And we can definitely spread out depending on how many people in that room. We can also do it via Zoom. And so if people want to be a part of it, but can't because we have a limit of, I don't know, 15 people in the building, then it can still be open to everybody else as well. That's what I was, that was my thought on it. We would still require masks and, you know, all the all the stuff that you're supposed to be doing. So that was my suggestion at least. We haven't figured that out. Yeah, because like the schools say three feet distance. Three feet distance is, you know, like arms length. So you know, you could do that. They're still saying, I don't know if they still say six feet is the appropriate one to be.
Six feet is the number which they use without masking.
Without masking.
I mean, I'm back in the office now, and as long as you're masked, no one is insisting on distancing. Whether that's the most sensible approach or not, I don't have the
Right.
knowledge to even comment.
I know at the town hall, they still have it like a good, I don't know, it's probably four feet.
I think it makes sense. Historical Society one, we were pretty those seats are pretty close together. And I did that for them there in town.
I think your idea of doing the Zoom coupled with limited attendance probably will work fine because you'll probably not necessarily max out. And you create the opportunity for people to participate.
Yeah. What would you suggest would be the limited? That's my my problem is trying to figure out, like, if we did it in here.
I'll speak to our code officer.
Goodness, yeah, sure. Since I started, five, almost five years. Actually, John, you might know, I don't know, like from back way back when, if you ever found out if there what the occupancy was.
You know, CFO wouldn't contain this. This was done by hostess square footage and stuff.
Okay. So women in attendance, Zoom and masks. Okay.
Six of us in here right now. I feel like if we were doing a program where people were just seated in chairs, not tables. Like a dozen?
Yeah, you could have three rows and three in a person speaking.
Well, one thing, we set up our mask program based on what they were doing in schools. So if they're using three feet in school, it can be consistent and use the same three feet and have the same justification.
That's true too. Yeah. I can always try and measure it out, but we could probably fit more than 12 people in there if we were doing that three. Maybe.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Oh, when we tried to figure out how many people we could fit in the tents, I believe there was a website I found that was a formula. I'll try to find it again.
Okay.
What do you do with 200 people?
That's a good question.
I think you can RSVP and just limit it to.
I would probably say, yeah, you have to. Signups required. Yeah. Right. And if, you know, people are waiting at the door, we'd have to wait until see if any, you know, some people who see. That's true. Yeah, actually. Yeah. Okay, so Zoom and attendance in this room or in that room, I'm not quite sure, but I would say it's probably like going to be no more than 20 most.
You know the square footage of this room?
I don't. No idea. I'm so I'm bad with figuring out measures.
It's a we want 20 people, three feet apart, they have to be 100, it has to be 180 square feet. Anyway, we can figure it out. All right. So we can figure that out, but I think we have an approach.
Yes. Okay, we'll just do a limited number based on.
And still for now, stick with no kids.
Yeah. Once kids can start getting vaccinated and that starts happening more often, I think, and we see numbers going down. But right now, I know like the, you know, in April Park, at least the high schools now seeing a surge in numbers. I know Berlin seeing numbers going up. So kind of keep it at that. All right. Well, then I'll start planning some programs for talks and stuff.
Okay. What do we have to treasure? No, yeah, treasures report. Melanie.
Hello. So we're still on track with our spending as we've been through the year. I, oops. Are you guys still there? I'm having a hard time looking at video and I reported at the same time. What was I saying? I mistyped a number last month, so we don't have as much of a surplus in income as I had in my report last month, but we still have a surplus in income as reported in the past. So that's like Jen was saying earlier, wonderful news, especially ahead of our annual appeal. And that's kind of the big stuff, I guess. We're on track. And after we go through the annual appeal, we will have more income for the year than we were expecting.
Great.
That's good to hear.
Any questions from Melanie? Any questions on the other financial reports that are posted, anything that? All right, moving on to committee reports. First fundraising committee. So update on this. So sorry. Sorry, I thought I uploaded this. Where is it? What did I do with it? So I think I had shared this last time, but I updated the plan for the annual appeal. I'll pull it up elsewhere.
Eight A two is the
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So I think I've updated this now with some numbers. So you can feel free to read through, but the plan that's just a high level to everyone's aware. The idea will be that we'll mail the printed appeal letter to the list of existing donors as well as all library card holders. And then we're going to do two other personalizations. So for those who have been large donors, we'll include a handwritten note thanking them for their support in the past and encouraging them to donate again. And then for new cardholders, same thing, a handwritten notes or welcoming to them and and encouraging them to let us know how they are finding the library experience. We'll also we'll do an email follow up for that list. So of the of the printed mailed list, we have 581 people on that list. There's 543 that have email addresses. That's pretty good. We'll also support this with Facebook posts during the appeal, during the follow up email, Giving Tuesday, that kind of thing. And we are working on integrating PayPal so that we have that option to offer as well. And then we'll plan to try to do the thank you donation acknowledgements within a week of receiving the donation. We'll do mailed letters for mailed and donations emails for email for online donations if we come through that way. And then we have some messages on here. You can feel free to look through that. In addition, if we have the logo approved, we'll be calling that out. That'll be featured on there. And we are going to include comments, the comments that we received from the survey. So we're going to highlight some of the positive feedback we heard. So that any questions on the plan for this year's annual appeal?
No, sounds good. He decided not to do a Steventown wide appeal.
They did a library of Steventown wide one a couple of years ago, and it ended up not being very productive in terms of getting any kind of donations. I think we only got a handful of new people to donate to. So the decision was to try and do it only to people who've already been donating and then adding in some of our cardholders.
I think we might look at, you know, see how this does, but this variation. Yeah. So and then we could consider, especially if we need to start expanding our fundraising you know, to go to the wider audience, but for for now.
Right, right, exactly.
Right. You're just doing like an every. In terms of the 2022 fundraising goals, we really don't have that yet because we have pending information coming in in terms of the larger, larger master plan project and then some of these other building maintenance related issues. So I think I think we actually need to do that as the next step as part of the budget process. So there just wasn't quite enough information yet to really put together a plan on that. Aside from, I think that we will try to look at different methods like having fund a particular project, which is try to see if we can push that forward in the new year and just try to have some different ways for people to to think about giving. So any questions, issues or things that people want to weigh in on on as we think about the 2022 fundraising? All righty, moving on, strategic planning, Ed.
We had a meeting and it actually worked.
We had a meeting and it actually worked quite well. We managed to make contact with Paul Mays while he was driving someplace, and so he was able to respond to our various questions. And he was willing to compromise on the things we didn't want either used or all of the things we wanted to change. And so Sarah was able to enumerate all the things that had been discussed before and things she was concerned about, and he was amenable and flexible. And so actually, you know, the relationship improved, not that it wasn't good before, but it was strengthened by our discussions. One thing that particularly was important to me was that the people who would be doing evaluations of our structural systems would be somebody who was actually qualified as an engineer to do the work. And so that we, even if we get nothing else out of the master plan, at least we'll be able to figure out how long each of the various systems is likely to last and therefore budget and plan from the long term. I, there's no point reading everything that I, I sent out a couple of days ago, but the key point is that we did agree unanimously that we should propose to the board that we vote on whether or not to accept his, his plan and to hire them. And we, as I said, we agreed unanimously. And so at the end of this discussion, we should actually have a vote.
And Ed, in terms of the strategic plan, I just wanna encourage people to look at what you sent out for the updates. So there was essentially no major changes or anything. We made a few, a few tweaks to the, the action plan that we have. So if you wanna review Ed's document, just as a high level, we're really keeping all of the same essentially all of the same action items as before, with some tweaks in terms of making some of them less specific, so that we don't have super detailed things like replacing desk chairs in the strategic plan, that we're keeping it at a higher level and that we know that we are then within our other, we're working on those specific items. We did add the updating of the library policies as something that was not on there before and is a priority for the action in this following year. So um, wanna go?
Yeah, part of the reason we did what you're saying is that we recognize that in the master plan, there will be a whole bunch of details. And so rather than try to make our own collection, then have Matt all the time changing, we just raised the level at which we were doing and became much less specific. And I think in the next year, we'll probably get back to being specific because we will have a plan and agree on which things we want to follow within it. But if anybody has anything you want to add, let me know, because I, I don't think we can vote on it the way it is. I will write it up for next time, and we can actually formally vote on the plan for next year. So if you wanna add anything specifically or change anything, um, right now's a good time, or send me an email.
Anyone have any questions for Ed on that or comments? Okay. Thanks, Ed.
Coming back to the, the vote, we did decide in the committee that we should accept the idea of using the proposal and getting the master plan from Mays. And so I don't know if it's appropriate, but I would like to make the motion that we do accept the plan. Or, you know, the proposal, so that we can hire them through the master plan. In terms of our cash flows, it worked out that we will spend about half the money this year and half that in next year's budget.
So I think we probably, folks probably need a summary of where we ended up on that, I'm assuming.
We have the amended material that's in the Google box, I think is what I saw. It just changes.
But I just wanted to see if we wanted to just give a quick high, high level, so people understand where we ended up on that.
Well, actually, Sarah has the list of what she had proposed, but again, everybody else had seen it and you.
I have it all up on my paper.
Maybe I, maybe I can help a little, and it'll be very it'll be high level, but in general. Uh, we started the process where Paul came in, as you know, he took a look at the library, provided some suggestions, presented a master plan to us. I think initially the board was really quite impressed with Paul in terms of his approach, his demeanor. I think we were probably a little taken aback by the amount of funds that would be required to do a master plan. Uh, we subsequently looked at what was being proposed, and I think probably the general observation was a good structure, looks like it's designed for a bigger organization with a larger plant than ours. We engaged in discussions with him in terms of focusing on sort of the size of our library and meeting our needs. And we continued to drill down and engage in a sort of an iterative process where we sort of are getting closer to, we're a little organization with a small building. We're looking for both help in terms of evaluating our plan to understand what our current needs are, what potential expenses are being, we'll have in the near term, and how we can plan for the future, given the useful life of what we have at place. We identified certain areas where we thought we would need, try to use our building more efficiently. We sort of liked the idea of expanding the footprint of the building, but in discussions, I think we realized that's a big it's a big project where we'd have to raise a lot of funding, and I think we began to focus more carefully on what can we do within our current footprint. Paul seemed really amenable to all of this stuff. He seems like a really good person to work with. Seems like his organization has got the, I'm not trying to be an advocate, this is just, this is just my sense of, I think they're really good. Um, and I think they've got the expertise to help us work through, looking at our library a little bit more critically in terms of what our current layout is and to figure out some more adventurous fixes than we could do otherwise without someone with an architectural and engineering experience. So he was like, I mean, and I think what we'll need to do, and now, now I'll editorialize, I think what we need to do is probably push Paul off of some of the things they've done in the past that have worked for other libraries and try to focus them a little bit more on sort of our immediate needs. I mean, I wasn't necessarily, and this is my personal opinion, I wasn't necessarily, obviously. I wasn't necessarily so enamored with some of the projects they suggested with the first workshop. But I don't think that really makes a difference. I think, you know, if we explain to him what we want and and, and think about other things that we might be able to do, I think collectively we can use them to not only have us more, well, have a better space to work in and do it in a phased way that we could probably afford. And I think the other advantage is, is he's really familiar with funding process. And I think he'll be an invaluable asset, both in terms of structuring grant proposals that will be receptive to Cooper Hudson. Um, I mean, and he does it for any number of other libraries in the system. And I think we always had a difficult time, at least the lore is. The grant process was always rocky for us, and I don't think we felt particularly successful in doing it, and there was a lot of in some way, some bitterness in terms of doing grants and just sort of getting rejected or, or what we were proposing wasn't didn't fit into the program. I think that he will avoid all of that, and also I think they've got some probably creative approaches. Saying all of that, I think this is a substantial undertaking, there's a lot of money involved. I mean, we're talking about committing probably eighteen thousand dollars over the next two years, which is a lot of money for this organization. But my sense is that it's probably money well spent um, and will create a roadmap to changing this library in a way that I think will make it a better library for its users. So that's sort of my editorializing coupled with, I think, where we are. I think these folks are really good, and I think we'll be happy with them, and I think they can do what we want to. And even in the context of if we decide to start working with them, I think they're really flexible and and, and I think they will accommodate our needs, and there are still things in this proposal that I look at and scratch my head about. But I think as we get into it, it may very well be that it's my imperfect understanding of what's involved in this project. These guys are expect experts, I'm not. But I think they're also not so rigid, so that if they look at it and go, yeah, you don't need that, I think, I think, I think they'll be very good. Yeah. And by the way, I mean, if you take a look at it, they came in initially at about twenty-eight thousand, twenty-six thousand, they're down at seventeen-five. So they took a twenty-five percent haircut, and I think that was a really, I mean, I was, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money off a proposal, and these guys know it, so I believe they wanna work with us. And I mean, one of the reasons maybe is that there are a lot of small libraries out there, and if they can create a model that works for smaller libraries rather than the bigger projects, I think it's, it's basically something that they can use as a marketing tool. So I think they, I think they probably priced, I look at it, I say it's expensive. I think probably from a professional's perspective, I thi- I think they're very competitively priced. So that's, that's my view of it.
Sorry, a good summary of sort of how, where we are, how, how we got to where we are. So that, so just so people know the bottom line, it is, right now, the proposal is seventy thousand five hundred plus reimbursables. It's basically three phases of work. One is about the existing conditions, one is coming up with the program and then the design. So this is all about planning, not about executing anything, just so everyone's clear, this just gives us the plan.
What it doesn't, what it doesn't cover is if you decide to go forward and they're doing plans and specing and all that stuff.
Right.
That's another big ticket item, but it's.
Right. That's you up to make really smart decisions about what we want to get. Exactly, yeah. The one thing we haven't received yet is we had, we had asked Paul to just give us like a, a, a high level timeline, so not a specific like project plan, but just sort of, okay, if we move forward with this, you know, when do we start doing work? When do we sort of have an idea of when this would end? Off, off the cuff, when he was just talking to us and he was in the car and everything else, so we're not gonna hold him to this, but he seemed to feel like we would be able to have the, the master plan done in the early spring to be prepared for grant, the grant season, so. And I'm sorry, I think I cut you off before, go ahead.
Okay, no, no problem. One thing to keep in mind is the, everybody who spoke to some other library got a positive feedback, and so that's another good thing in their favor.
Yes, I think we called four or five references, and they were all very positive, they were all consistent as well with their feedback. And everybody spoke highly of Paul and his ability to communicate not only with the board but also in the community at large and being very helpful in that process as well, trying to like be able to help sell, sell the process and the projects. Yeah, the other thing that I think is important is they mentioned not just Paul, but his wife and the other people that work with him, and it was like, right, it's about that as well. It's not like a piece done in the next year.
And the other thing that I would add, and Melanie is second, as I take a look at the top line items we've got parsed out, I mean, we're working off of at the moment, something like a probably a, I've got about a sixty thousand dollar cushion, give or take, or at least, you know, that, that's money in the bank that isn't permitted. Um, we probably, and we can chat about this a little later on, probably near term, we're thinking about doing just maintenance work, which runs anywhere probably between five and ten thousand dollars for the next year or so, or even in the nearer term. Um, we've got some of that money actually earmarked in our special accounts, like we've got eight thousand dollars reserve painting. The repair reserve is probably under where we are. The special projects, I don't remember whether this, I mean, we didn't contemplate through the master plan, so I don't think at that time.
No.
It just happens to be a number around that number. But maybe at the end of the day, I think if we commit seventeen-five um, and assuming that we get between five and ten thousand dollars in the annual fund this year, you're still talking about fifty thousand dollar money in the bank that isn't permitted without looking at the special accounts, which is pretty good. Either give or take those, those numbers are real rough, and Melanie could connect correctly, because I probably got it wrong. But I'm feeling sort of confident that it's a big nut. But it's, it's manageable and it'll leave us money to do something. And that's just, that would, my concern about this was, we paid twenty thousand dollars for a spiffy report and then realized that we're starting from zero and relying on the kindness of others to be able to do some projects. My sense is that hopefully we'll be able to do some smaller things, get funding for that, make changes that make a real impact, hopefully, and get people excited about sort of the potential of this place. That's, that's sort of my motto.
I think one thing to know is that the special projects money, we have eighteen thousand five hundred dollars in there. That money all was specifically from annual appeal from the past two years. So when Nettie was treasurer, she just took everything that was an annual appeal and put it into special projects, so that, that we can be fit up again next year with, and do the same thing. Yeah, so we can continue to do that if that's where we wanna put that money for annual. So, yeah.
So, I think we're ready for someone to make a motion to approve going forward with Paul's firm.
Second?
I will second that.
Okay, alright, and we're ready to vote, is Melanie? Let's give her a shout. I know she's putting her kids to bed, so. She says, let her know, she's listening in, but.
There she is.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, so all in favor of moving forward with Paul Mays' proposal?
Aye, aye.
Any, any?
I would like to abstain, simply don't know enough about it.
Okay. So let's see, that gives us, that still gives us pass, right? Alright, so one abstention and whatever, you'll do the math, Sarah. Melanie and Rebecca were.
Yeah.
I will call Paul tomorrow and let him know and see where we need to go from there. I, I do see that it needs to be signed, the proposal. So I'm not sure who signs that, if that would be Jen?
Jen or some of the officers probably were.
Yep, okay, so.
We've got the board approval with authority assignment.
So they will do that one belief today, that way I can have it.
Yeah, maybe you can just send us the final, like the non-markup.
Sure, okay, ask. Okay.
Alright, thanks, everybody. Exciting.
Great.
Okay, so next is building the grounds, and we've already started to touch on a little bit of that through the director's report. Scott was just mentioning, Scott, do you wanna just?
No, this will be real quick. I mean, basically, I told you that you've been really, really busy gathering stuff. I tried to put together something really important in terms of budgeting, but also just a, a highlight of the kinds of things that are bumping around. If anyone knows of anything more, let us know. But on the pages where we have sort of, well, I don't have all the estimates down here, but I have numbers floating around, whereas we had some estimates, I think Kim will fill, fill that out. But in terms, I think when we were discussing it, and I don't know that we formalized anything, it was our feeling that the electric panel, which is probably a code violation, probably needs to be dealt with. Sealing the deck sooner rather than later makes more sense because of the wasting asset and the snows, snow is wet and it'd be better to seal wood prior to the winter. Um. I don't know whether anyone had a strong feeling about cleaning up the front yard, but I think the feeling was having that cleaned up sooner than later is better. And we really need to get a handle with respect to the health of the trees. My reading of the various reports we've gotten is that there are one or two trees there that may need to be taken down. A NICEG will come out and take a look. And I think between NICEG and the information you've gotten from some of the arborists you've spoken to, maybe they're just tree services.
No. So the one guy is from Cornell Cooperative Extension and he said that the one tree is definitely dead and a hazard. He said, I would mark this one as a hazard. The others are all dying and about to go, so. It would be prudent to take them all down, especially if we have to worry about a high wind.
So the question for us from a cost standpoint, I mean, it sounds like thirty five hundred dollars maybe in the area. You may find some less, you may find someone more, you want to get, make sure that there's insurance and whoever's cutting them down wires, but much NICEG may come in and take care of it too, so. Let them come out, they're scheduled to come out in the next couple of weeks, they'll get back to us and let us know what they, or whether they're all some responsibility for, they've got arborists and crews, so.
So the question would be if, if NICEG doesn't do this, doesn't take that on, says it's not our responsibility, we don't need to deal with that, should we then just go ahead and do a tree service to come in sooner rather than later? As not an emergency basis, but as a very, you know, we need to do this ASAP. Or should we wait until the next meeting when we can then approve a proposal and go through all the steps?
I think we should take all of the steps that we need to take in order to be ready to move. See what NICEG has to say and if we need to pull the trigger earlier. I mean, in some parts, you'll get the, you've had the tree experts and I don't know that the C C came in and tell for you how dangerous things, these things are, but.
He did say the one that's dead and is a hazard has rot in the trunk, so. Yeah, so if we don't hear from NICEG within a month, I would say we need to, like, harass them.
Basically, they said to me, given their schedule.
Oh, okay, perfect.
So it wasn't, it wasn't that, it was that long, I think probably within the next three weeks, we'll, we'll get a. Yes.
Exactly.
I do think we need some more estimates as well, because that thirty five hundred, just that, I mean, it sounds low. I, I mean, it's great if that's what it is, but that seems low. And I think we need to really have a better feel for also, you know, clear exactly what they're doing with the removal. But I, I think we need some comparison.
Yeah, no, there's no question. I think on this one, it's from licensed and sure and true services.
Okay, I'll, I'll get in touch, I, you know, some of the people didn't get back to me, so, you know, I'll, I'll work on that again. That was another question that the guy had, I don't know, I know nothing about taking trees down, so I would assume. Okay. So your suggestion would be to just leave them then?
Well, no, I, I've not.
Probably if we could get them to keep that one separate item, itemize that on the, on the call, so maybe compare.
From, from an aesthetic standpoint, unless you can work them into a fence, having five stumps out in front of the library is bad, aren't you? Yeah, that, that's true, you're, you're right. Earns would be really nice, something class.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into that then.
Get prices for the earns.
Um, so then the other ones that need to be looked into would be the, to doing right away would be with Kirk and doing the cleaning of the deck and staining it and getting that done before the wintertime. He said he had some time, I'm not sure how much time he has left or if we even have enough time left to do any of that. See if it's going to start getting pretty cold out. We might have missed our opportunity to hear that, so I can talk to him about it. But if we want to go ahead and approve something like that, then we can at least have it available and ready. If he sees that we're going to have a week of, you know, good weather or something.
I think you gave, he gave what, a twelve, eleven hundred dollar, which didn't seem, I mean, we don't have other bids on this field?
No, I didn't get any other bids because I wasn't too sure where we were going with it, so I can't.
Yeah, which doesn't seem crazy.
He would, he said he would do this, the deck and all the, and the wood, the steps for both entrances as well. So it would be doing everything.
And painting, or just?
Power washing and staining. Um, let's see. Uh, material pickup, tire washers. So he would clean the deck handrails, spindle steps, stain all of the deck with a clear coat of Benmore Arborcoast stain, clear and clean and stain both front entrance steps and landings, price includes labor and materials, and that's for eleven twenty eight.
It sounds reasonable.
Yeah. They're kind of important assets at this point, you know. Mitchell, Mitchell. Okay, so we need a motion to approve moving forward with the proposal from Kirk Mitchell.
Good idea, I'm still move.
Okay, Ed moves, Scott, you second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looks like it's unanimous.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so.
So it seems like the other stuff at this point is really kind of still in the planning phase. We need to still finish, finish getting estimates and we're probably.
So yeah, the.
For planning for the next season for some of these things.
The only other thing would be the, well, we need to figure out the electric panel. And then the gardens in the front. When I spoke with Alex, no, Andrew, about the front gardens, he was saying that, you know, they probably won't be able to do anything until the springtime anyway, but, and then, actually, Andrew Zima said the same thing, but he was also kind of like, well, and I could probably come down to our neighbors, like, you know, if I have some extra time, I can do some stuff in there. But they did say it would probably be better to get it done a little bit before the winter, just to, it might be easier to dig out some of those big bushes that need to be back out, so. You know, and they both had different ideas, I never got a, an esti-, I didn't get an estimate yet from Andrew Zima. I don't know if we want to wait on that and, you know, I'm sure it's going to, it's going to take a lot of work no matter what we do. So if we want to wait for the springtime, I'm sure that that will be okay too.
Well, the dead bushes aren't going anywhere.
Not going anywhere, that's for sure. Yeah.
And some of it is cleaning up, it's.
Could he say when he's going to get you to bid, or?
Um, he didn't, he said he's extremely busy right now. So as all, all, all of the landscapers are saying, they're crazy busy. So I sent him an email at the beginning of the week and I haven't heard back from him yet. I can call again, I'm sure that it'll be fine if you wait, I don't think it's going to be a big deal. And I know Andrew, from Andrew's Property Maintenance, he also gave me an estimate for, because he, they used to do all of our grounds work. They used to be the ones to do, but I, I've found out that he, for mowing, mowing and trimming, which is what Kirk does, Kirk charges fifty a day, a, a mowing, and Andrew charges seventy two, which is why we must want to Kirk instead. So, you know, they were, it was just kind of a, an interesting thing. So wait on that and I'll get another couple, I'll get something else from Andrew and, okay. And then what about the electric panel?
Do we have multiple, we have multiple, not just multiple bids, multiple approaches, right?
I've got two approaches, Guy did say he would send me, what, because he, so Guy Gramley so, spoke to Mike Colleen, who's the electrician, and he asked him, what would you suggest we do with the space, like, to make it so that it's okay? And Guy said he would send me those ideas, I haven't heard back from him yet since I said, please do, we would love to hear. So I don't know what those were, but we do have two other options with Kirk and Glenn Phillips, so.
And what were the prices on the?
Extending. I, the reason I opened this was because what it looks like is you've got your electric lines, your service there in here, your service coming in here. You may have, it looks like they didn't put it in the wall. So you probably need to just build it out and bump it out, I don't see that really makes difference whether you have wood or just a shoot required.
So.
I mean, it doesn't do anything, it's not a function.
So Kirk wrote that he would remove the oak panel box over the electric box, rebuild a larger one with the same three style panels there now with the door large enough to access the electric breaker box. Price includes materials and labor and that's, he has eight hundred and fifty three dollars and five cents for that specific part of the bin. I did ask him to give us a bid for the wall because we have the wall in the kitchen that still has three holes in it that the kids like to pull insulation out of, so.
He would just turn that into an activity.
Right now, it's being covered with clear packaging tape, which is now ripped. So, uh, the, he did say he would install a quarter inch Luan sheet over the exposed wall and then that would cost ninety dollars eighty cents. So that was Kirk's proposal. And then Glenn Phillips, he proposed doing the framing and the sheet rocking and then just doing a panel bot, like a panel cover. And he had twelve hundred as that, that.
So Kirk comes in really at nine hundred, with the mighty idea.
Which seems surprisingly less expensive than just drywall.
Yeah, I'm kind of surprised about myself.
Yeah, the drywall is grossly excessive.
Grossly accept, the bid is, not the approach.
Yeah, no, it would look nice probably, and it's a nice look however it is, it sounds like a better idea.
So I could find out what.
Yes, correct how much it costs to drywall.
That's what I was just going to say, I could ask him, I'd be happy to ask that.
If I view, I don't know that the wall, the wood wall panel, it's much.
No, I thought it would be a simpler, I mean, it's beautiful, it looks really nice and it ties in, you know, it's definitely, it's pretty, but do we need to have it in wood like that?
It's pretty but odd.
What's that? I'm pretty sure, yeah.
So the drywall estimate, are they playing with something, or just leaving the panel exposed?
No, frame and sheet rock, wire chassis to access the panel box, cover holes with board to cover insulation. Oh, that's the inside, that's in there, so he would make a door, is what he has done, so that we can open a door to get access to it now.
Like what?
I don't remember what kind of a door he was talking.
It really doesn't make any sense.
Well, normally, well, what you normally see with panels, they usually some hidden away area, but you'll have just the metal panel box with the drywall and you have access to whatever.
What I'm thinking about is, you know, going back to the code violation, it's still covered. I mean, you can take the, the panel face off, but it would still be covered up front. So in case of an emergency, somebody has to literally come open the latch or whatever and then access the panel.
Right. Well, the code thing though is that they can't take, they can't get into the panel at all. So they can't take the cover off of the pan, of the electric box. In order to get to that, you have to take the entire thing off. So that's where, if they can, if we can get it so that it's covered up and still accessible, so you just take the door off and, and, you know, take the cover off, then that would be acceptable, so.
I have a question, actually, no, I answered you. What level of expenses do we have to vote on? Like for instance, you know, if there's ordinary maintenance things, is there a dollar amount?
I think we voted a couple of years ago on five hundred dollars or more, anything that was going to be five hundred or more.
And do we ever do things like approve to spend up to whatever amount of money on this project? Without having a specific exclusion yet?
We do, we've done that quite a few times where, you know, we'll, we give approval for the director to do fifteen hundred dollars worth of work or up to, but not in, you know, that kind of thing, yeah.
So I'm wondering if we can do that for this, it seems like there's still some back and forth, but maybe we are.
I mean, I would be fine with that, and then if you, I would obviously, you know, before doing anything, send out, here's what plan is, please tell me if you have any objections and I go from there, so.
It might be a good strategy to limit the amount you want to spend, say five hundred dollars. And when you're negotiating, you say, board has allocated five hundred dollars, what can you do for us for five hundred dollars? And that might get it down that way. It seems like an awful lot of money, that nine hundred dollars just to open up a box, just as a concept. Something less expensive. And so if we just say, oh, what we could do is five hundred dollars and maybe somebody will come up with something, five hundred dollars, nothing to lose.
I don't know, they're both coming in relatively close.
The, and Kirk was going to do, you know, a wood, another wooden panel that to may, basically make it look exactly like it is, just make it bigger so that we have access, so, and, you know, for eight hundred bucks, that's not a huge amount. It didn't seem like, what's that?
That seems sort of, that's just a little class. My, my inclination here is just to find out from how much drywall they, and leave a metal panel there. Unless someone thinks that that's an obligation.
I guess we could cover it up with a picture or something so that it's not.
The only problem with the picture is that it's in the corner.
Yeah.
So it's, it's going to be, it's going to look, a panel wouldn't look, that is a, a normal access panel, clearly, probably a picture would. But I'm not sure that that looked, I mean, that's, that's a curious thing anyway.
Okay, I'll ask Kirk how much to.
I think what Kirk was going to do was build the, build this out at his shop and then bring it in and just install it. I think that that was what he was saying would be the easiest thing for him to do. So maybe that's part of the reason why he's got a little bit cheaper than.
Did it include like staining and like everywhere, was that like? Maybe there's some.
That's possible too, I can ask, I'm not sure if he, if that included the staining of it, but I can.
And there's probably a whole collection of cables going up and down.
Yeah, and they're exposed.
You know, and so you can't just simply leave the box there, you have to do something more.
So are we saying we want to have Kim further investigate and we decide on the next meeting?
I'm just saying that if we support her by saying, we're not going to allow anyone five hundred dollars, somebody will come up with a less expensive solution. Yes.
And to be afraid, I would be nervous about you pay for what you get, or you get what you pay for, end of the situation.
So sheet rock that corner, maybe if we just take down the entire cabinet and put up a couple of two by fours to hold the sheet rock, it should not cost anywhere near nine hundred dollars.
I, I agree with you.
The whole thing, it's excessive.
I think if you ask Kirk, if you just sheet rocked and let, and let the metal panel upfront, how much it would cost, you'll probably get a much lower estimate.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay, so I'll, I can ask Kirk to give us a, you know, tell me how much that would cost.
And everybody feels comfortable with just having the metal panel?
Yeah, that's really, I think that's a major question. Yeah, that's really, I think that's a major question you have, but it doesn't bother me, but. It's gonna be that color. You're absolutely right.
So you would say keep the box ex, but like the panel, the gray box exposed? Is that, that's what?
And you'll paint it the color of the wall.
Oh, you paint the box? Oh, okay, got it.
No, there's no, there's no rule about painting the box.
And what did you say?
I said, there's no rule about painting the box. You can paint it any color you like. We could even paint a painting on it if we wanted.
That's right. We can do a mural.
A cool op art piece that's in my parents' house. Totally do that. All right, why don't I'll get some information from Kirk from there. So do you guys want to authorize the mount or do we want to come back for next month?
Why don't we authorize five hundred dollars, get a price. If it's lower than that, let's do it. If it's within that, we can have an executive session to raise the ante fifty bucks.
Do you have a motion?
I so move.
Okay.
I move, we limit the cost to five hundred dollars or less.
And everyone.
Hi.
Hi.
Great. Brandon Marketing. Oh, now that I think of Brandon Marketing, I, I, I rescind my vote because I think we should do stained glass. Thought of that a minute sooner. All right. So I think because it centers around for midstream, probably all actually never just to look at it. But I can go through it or, you know, sort of give a recap if that sounded.
Do you think that's even necessary?
I, I, I mean, if you want to feel free, I'm just saying, I read it. I thought it was good. People read it. I don't know. I'll just raise one issue. I don't, I think, I think it's nice. The selection of bluebirds surprised me, only in the sense that you're gonna need to build recognition for, for the brand. And it doesn't have any connection to the library. So, well, yeah. And, and that's, I mean, for me, you could put a picture of the library for that matter too. It just seems that, that was really my major question about is, is it worth, because the bluebird is maybe the state bird, necessarily look like a bluebird. Well, I don't know that whether, I know what bluebirds look like, but I didn't recognize that as a bluebird. But I like the color. The color helps really does.
It's an actual color.
Well, actually, that's.
You need to change your toner.
Apparently so. Yes, that is the color of them. I like your mind. I'm going, it's like turquoise.
I've been to make bluebird boxes, all kinds of things can be done with it. And like with any logo, until people get used to it, they, they don't identify with your brand. And I wouldn't be surprised if people don't necessarily identify this with our brand even now.
Well, the problem with that was it looked like a public health turds.
Yeah.
It was, it was fine. I mean, it worked for us. I sort of liked it, but it was, it didn't screen library. Yeah, it was definitely really, exactly.
We can't hear you, Sarah.
It reinforces the idea that the library is for families with little kids and we wanted to be much more expansive to make it clear that the library is for everybody and we're welcoming everyone. And that's sort of why this sort of hopeful welcoming bluebird makes my heart sing.
The other thing with the bluebird is that Logan and I spoke about making like doing an SML kids logo with a caricature of a bluebird where you can actually kind of bring it into a kid's thing as well. So you can do a couple of different things with it. So the one thing to know about this is that it will have to be redone because the format of it is not appropriate. Like we just did this very quickly on Photoshop thing and it was, it's a small file. It's a small resolution. So it will have to be basically rebuilt again. So.
Give us the file.
To give the file size we need and everything like that. So we should be able to, yeah. I mean, if people want to have any comments about the bird or the colors, I think we'll probably make sure that the colors fit more with what the color palette that we chose. I don't remember which one it was, but with the different moods more, yeah, to make sure that's still.
We have the, we have that, all that information that the designer provided as well. So she provided those.
I couldn't hear the discussion of why the bluebird is blue.
The bluebird is blue. Scott said he had a printout that didn't show that accurate color. So.
Oh, oh, so it is blue. Okay. I was wondering why it was green.
Oh, no, it's not green. It's definitely blue.
And so is everybody comfortable at this point? And the, the other thing that I think this detail is that at one point we were thinking of moving away from the tagline and because of all the feedback that we got about the library and survey, everybody was talking about exactly these, these things. And it felt like a place for community connection, that it provided access to neighbors and resources. And so we thought, why move away from something that actually speaks to what the library offers? So we wanted to hold onto the headline. And then we evolved the creative around that as well. So does anyone want to make a motion to adopt?
Then seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. I'll, in favor?
Hi.
Great time. Wonderful. Now we're about to move forward. We have a bunch of stuff to move forward on. That's terrific.
Well, I don't know how long it'll take, but it won't take too long. I don't think to get the actual files up and running and doing that kind of thing. So.
Great. Thank you. Okay. And then I guess I'm gonna move on to the community survey conversations. I know a number of you, unless you want me to cover the question.
I think just to say that we are still, that that still has to be fit into the, you don't have a recommendation at this point, right?
I don't know. Based on where we are this year and we move out the stuff that actually we had paid for by external sources, the town board and the brand, we're at eight hundred, it looks to me like, or close to eight hundred and we have a fifteen hundred dollar budget. So I think we can either stick with what we have or maybe go to two thousand. If we're gonna do a lot more, maybe with the logo creating magnets, things like that. I, I don't have a good sense of how much that stuff costs. And how that might impact mailing costs if we were gonna mail.
Right.
Or if we just want to be able to like include things in a welcome, if there's a welcome package, expand, things like that, you know? I prefer to go to two thousand, which knows. So that we can show that good time. And the community survey conversations, positive things, the, the one that took place on September twenty seventh was a multi-organization conversation. We were kind of excited that there were representatives from every single organization that was included with the kind of the Stephen Town seniors. We got some feedback from the survey that we included at the end of it, which was mostly very positive that the, you know, the research was clear and concise and made sense and that kind of stuff. It sounded like maybe the breakout rooms weren't quite so successful, probably didn't give people enough time. Maybe people weren't sure what the purpose of it was. I, I, one of the pieces of feedback that we got in the survey was that people felt like we'd already made the decision. So why were we asking people what they thought? Because we've made the decision about the directory and the newsletter. But that wasn't necessarily so. We just were, those made sense to us and we were doing the research around how we could maybe make that happen or move forward. Just so that we were aware, you know, by, by speaking to history and our media and, you know, let it on about growth of value and stuff like that.
So I have a question. Was the feedback that they didn't think they were good ideas or they just bent out of shape? Why are you wasting my time because you already decided goes way there for you?
I, I mean, I think it'd go out. More just, it was more the process. Why are you asking us if you have a right? And we didn't get a chance to answer because it was all anonymous.
I think we, we were anticipating there might be, the way the conversation ended up being, the way we had it structured with the online, it kind of, the conversation wasn't as expansive and we thought originally people are gonna be like, well, what, what about this? Like, how would you do this? And so we thought, well, we should be prepared with some answers if we say like, oh, well, we know other places to do this. Yeah.
Yeah. And then that's trying to do a liability. It's maybe it was just somebody. Yeah. But you guys were there, so you all have your experience with it.
I mean, I, I understand that people may have felt pushed into, because basically it was identified as these are doable, as opposed to some of the other stuff which is. So folks, I think we're pushed into talking about more. I, I don't say pushed in a bad way. I just say sort of like, no. Yeah, it was sort of like they, you sort of identified the options for that and so not everyone felt compelled, of course. I didn't feel coerced.
Well, one, a couple of positive things, a few people did raise their hands to say they're interested in pursuing it more and working with us. And what I'm planning to do, actually some other things sort of bubbled up kind of organically in the community after that, which may or may not have had anything to do with it, like, you know, with Stephen Town on her Facebook page popped up and it does some of the same things that we were saying were important to people, like to talk about all, all the community events that are happening. So that could be serendipity or it might have been influential in some way. I'm not sure because Robin and Pam were involved in the conversations with Louise. So we're gonna have a meeting with the five folks from the board. Noa said he was interested and Pam and Louise and Robin to sort of discuss what seems to, what people think and what seems to fit within the purview of the town board versus elsewhere and, you know, just sort of. Our, our feeling is at this point, let it sort of happen organically. If people want to take the reins and move towards something, that's great. And if not, we have the conversation and.
I added the community events to this month's newsletter. I figured, let me give it a try and see how hard it is. And really, it was just about picking up the phone really quick and talking to each organization and, you know, finding out what they had going on. And everybody that I spoke to was very appreciative of it. So it might be the kind of thing that, you know, I can, I can try and work on, you know, incorporating town events with the nonprofits that are in town. I don't know that I would want to go and find everything that's happening in town, but at least the nonprofit stuff. You know, of all the different organizations, what, what do you have to tell us for the month? That I would be willing to do, but I'm not gonna, I don't think that going to like, you know, gardeners and finding out what their programs are for the month or, I think that that would be way too much. So I'm happy to keep that in the, in the newsletter, you know, doing a once a month newsletter with that stuff. And then I would also continue doing our newsletter where, you know, I'll come to the library next month, next week, or, you know, all the, the smaller ones. So.
And Saturday actually gets up and running this, this more, why can there be less than a day to us?
Exactly. Exactly. I would like though to get the word out to other people that, you know, have this newsletter to go out because right now it's only going out to just the library people who signed up. So if anyone has an idea of how to get it to others, I could use that help because I don't know how to get it to everybody else. There is a sign up on, is that still a funnel website?
It might not be. I made some changes, but we have to restructure our website in a way that it's efficient.
So if we could just add a link into there in some way to sign up for the newsletter, then that could be something we can do. But now that we have the logo and everything, we can definitely move ahead with that.
And then just the last thing is that we have one more conversation coming up, which is a community-wide conversation. We were back and forth about whether to do it in person versus online and decided that online is a better way to go. So we're doing that Zoom as well. We've kind of learned some, some lesson from the last go around and we're trying to incorporate some like interactive quizzes and things like that into the presentation, but this group of people, for the most part, will not have seen any reports. So it's gonna be new to them. So I think I will, it'll, it'll be more detailed. I'll go more slowly because everybody in that room had access to the full reports and that probably will come to some degree. So, you know, I think it'll be new to people. There's less of an ask, so it won't be uncomfortable. And it will be pretty manageable because it's, you know, people won't be going a lot, but we don't, we don't, you know, it remains, we see how many people will.
Has it been advertised?
Yes. It's on, on the Facebook page. There's a, gonna be a notice in the Eastern Press.
Okay.
Shared it in the groups. There's some flyers around town.
Should I send something out to the?
Like I said, if you, if you're doing one anyway, I wouldn't say do it just for this. I don't think that's appropriate, but if you're doing, you're doing a mid-month one, if you're doing one to promote the rest of the stuff, that would be great.
I, I was planning on doing, you know, just a couple to, you know, remind people that pumpkins and Halloween and all that stuff. So I can.
One other thing that kind of made me happy was BJ, where I heard a Democratic committee meeting mention the survey in relation to how important locally, I'm see voluntary, I'm see this to people and how that was kind of new to us.
Um, where's the link gonna be published for the?
It's, it's on the Facebook page or they can email us. So I'll send you the.
Okay, if you could send me, that would be great.
And one last thing is we did not get the round two grant.
Right.
We kind of, we were very pressed for time. Plus we had actually, we hadn't, because our schedule, we hadn't really done the conversations yet when we had to apply. We didn't know what to say in terms of. So it was a bit of a stretch, but, and, and I think they saw that it was a bit of a stretch. Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah. I think there are quite a few libraries that had had conversations, so I think they had more specifics to be able to say. So. Seems like something that seems to be ongoing though. So there may be more opportunities in the future. Cool. All right. Recruitment. I think Rebecca, you said there was not, not really any news to report there.
Yeah, I mean, there's not much news to report there. Our volunteer email.
And how about youth committee?
Well, I mean, we're kind of running out of time, so I will keep it short, I guess. I think, has everybody read the report?
Yes.
So does anybody have any questions or comments on it?
Just to thank you for all the hard work on the Halloween party. Been a lot on that. And I think we still could use some volunteers.
Right. We need two board members to run a table at the library. Jen and Kim are already running the costume contest. So. Right. But if we could find someone else, you also talked about doing something for the food pantry up there. So.
I think we have enough judges now and Bonnie may or may not be able to come because of the food donation.
I think we have enough judges now, and Bonnie may or may not be able to come because of the food donation, but Kim says we have enough judges. I think we have enough judges, I mean, I think we'll be okay.
Rebecca, is the table at the same time as the trunk?
Yes.
If you want the table rather than do the car, I can do that, I'm sure.
Well, that's a good question, we don't have a trunks, you were gonna do a car.
I don't have a lot of trunks that have signed up.
No, so I'm wondering if we should have everyone do the trunks instead, and then to do the table inside during library hours with whoever's working on Saturday, running that.
Yeah, I mean, do we want to reach out to Robin, or?
She's, uh, when is she away, she's away of 27, 28. Yeah, so maybe she's back.
I didn't get any answers to my email, so I don't know.
Tom might help with something.
Who's that?
Tom might help with something.
Tom is parking, he is, he's parking the trunks. I didn't, I didn't ask volunteers to help with the library table, I only asked board members to help with the library table.
Would ones, members be able to stay longer, we just pay them for their extra time for the program?
And I'm also gonna do tables.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So the Halloween is one to. I will ask someone, see if anybody, if Jody or Vicki can either stay longer, or one of them, you know, divide up the day, so that it's not one person doing my entire day. So let me talk to Jody and Vicki and see if we can't do that.
I mean, I could see if a volunteer would run the library table, if it doesn't have to be a library board member.
No, I don't see why it has to be, I mean, we're just.
Other than paying someone to do it, it's not, you know.
So if it means somebody, Sarah's gonna be.
Right.
At the table as well, so.
It could be volunteer, yeah.
Okay, I'll reach out and see.
I don't think it's gonna be that hard to do.
No, it's not hard.
So, I don't, you know.
Yeah.
You're just gonna be giving out books and giving out numbers for people to, or ticket, like, voting cards, basically, vote for your favorite thing, so. So, I, so I think we're okay on that, on that front.
Okay. Um, we also need volunteers to help set up, clean up, or just be around during the event, I don't know. If you guys plan on being there, or?
I'll definitely be there the whole time. John said he can help, Noe said he can help.
Okay.
Sarah, Jen. Scott's gonna be there with the car, too, so. And Noe's gonna be there with the car as well, so.
Um.
And drag Janet.
What time do you want us there to set up?
What?
What time do you want us there to set up?
We are gonna set up probably from 10:00 to 10:30, there's not a lot of setup. We're not really doing a lot of decorations and stuff, because it's outside, so it's just really setting up the games, it shouldn't be too hard. And then just staying after to clean up is a, a big help, they did specify that we needed to pick up all the candy wrappers.
I imagine we also need to be careful at inviting dogs to the contest, that we need to pick up any.
Right, hopefully people know good etiquette to pick up after themselves. The only other thing we need to do, if anybody is interested, I think Saturday, Kim, at around 4:30, we're gonna go collect pumpkins here on the East Road. Um, to load into the trailer.
Yeah. Yeah, so if anyone wants to help pick pumpkins. That's at what time? 4:30 on Saturday. What's that?
Saturday is my anniversary.
Oh, happy anniversary. That's a Saturday.
Picking will probably get kicked out of my house.
It's not usually that hard to do, but this year Larry said that the, the fields are pretty wet, so we might have to park the cars closer to the road, and then carry pumpkins, or, you know, use a wheelbarrow or whatever, to get them to the cart, so. Yeah, it's actually the fields that are right by Sugar Bush Farm. You'll see, it's, if you're going south on East Road, it's right on the.
Yeah, I think they belong to Sugar Bush Farm, he just rents them out.
Yeah, that's how he does most of his property, I think.
It's nice to be on Saturday.
Um, well, that's when Rebecca will have the trailer there, so, if, you know, but it, it's really okay, it, it doesn't take a huge amount of time to do, so, and my family doesn't know it, but they're, they've been recruited as well, so. They're more family. Okay, it's better than one year I did them all on my own, they were, it was a lot of pumpkins, I, you know, so, it's like, no, this is good, make them work. All right, well, good on that, last thing that we need to do is administrative committee, we have updated the director's review form and, and finalized the staff input form, which were sent out, so, posted, so this was fairly minor in that, so we had last year's director's review form, I think what happened, we had taken it out, tried to streamline it a little, then that got a little bit convoluted. And so we went back, and we looked at the old form, we looked at the job description, we looked at, and just sort of married it. So there's nothing new in there in terms of, like, nothing, you haven't added anything that was not in your job description, or wasn't in the review form before. We just kind of made the language better, so that it matched up, and so that there weren't like a bazillion things.
A double category, so that people, you don't really know what you're ingrained on.
Right.
We try to make it clear.
Okay. And the staff input was just, we just, we just tweaked the last version that was reviewed with folks, so. So do people have any questions? Suggestions? Okay, if not, can I get a motion to approve the new, the director's review form and the staff input form? All right, Sarah, move, seconded? Thanks, John, okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Wonderful, thank you, everybody. Um, any old business? Any new business? I have one quick thing, I just wanted to suggest, see what people thought about this. I know we're always trying to streamline, so people aren't getting million emails. One of the, like, the fire department, and I think other places sometimes have a section of the meeting correspondence, which always seemed silly to me, but I sort of seen another point, and I thought, did we get stuff like from the different library associations, and sometimes we get Upper Hudson, and sometimes it's like, I don't know if this is of interest or not, I don't know if this is something that people want, should I send it, should I forward it, is that too much email? So I thought, well, the only way to do is just, anything that isn't urgent, that you guys would need to know right away, that's that category, like, of interest, that's not covered in the director's report, but it's something that the trustee should know. Could just save it, have it in, in, in here, in the shared file, so people can review it, and I can just highlight anything that people should know. Like, we did have that thing where there's now gonna be a new requirement, that any trustees have to have two hours of training, you know, that's something we should know. But if that works for people, maybe we'll just try that next month and see if we can. Great. All right, well, thank you, I'm sorry, we're, actually, we're right on time in terms of, we, we started about 14 minutes late, and we're ending about 14 minutes late, so. We did a lot of work tonight, thank you, everybody, yeah, lots of good progress. We'll see, I hope a lot of you on Halloween party day.
We didn't ask for public comment.
No public. Or should we comment on the public? All righty.
I'll make a motion for a jury.
Thank you, seconded.
I'll second it.
Everybody wants to second that one. I think we all.